Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of June 11th, 2024. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's do roll call.
Commissioner Mari Patla.
Yes.
Commissioner Mistri.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp, here. Vice Chair Lenzkog.
Here.
Chair Feng is absent.
Okay, great. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes from the May 28th Planning Commission meeting. If everyone could take a second to review the minutes. And then somebody can make a motion. Oh, are there any public comments on the minutes from last month's meeting?
There are no comments. Chair.
Okay.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
Do we take a vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We have to do a voice vote.
Yes, we have to do a voice vote today because Commissioner Mistri is remote. Commissioner Mari Patla.
Yes.
Commissioner Mistri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lenzkog.
Aye.
Motion carries with one absentee Feng.
Are there any postponements?
No, Vice Chair.
We are now moving on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on the agenda today. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And yeah, I think that's it. Okay. Should we start with the ones in the?
We have.
How many do we have?
We have one remote.
One online? Okay. First speaker is Jennifer Griffin.
Good afternoon or evening, Chair and Planning Commission. First of all, I wanted to state that I was very, very concerned because there were two meetings of high interest at the same time. One of them is the Park and Rec Commission, which had the Lawrence Midi Park, which I have worked on tirelessly for the last 12 years. We were in Virginia flying on vacation on the 28th when this came up to, I guess, you all, Planning City Council. And I was hoping tonight, or sometime, to get to talk about it. But I chose to come to this. I know that because Apple controls the money for the park, it will not be abused. And I have great faith that Ms. Rachel and the Park and Rec Commission and the staff will make sure that they do their due diligence with the park and that Apple will not let any of the money be used or abused. Anyway, I, we really need to look into this because I have asked repeatedly why these two meetings, Park and Rec is never on a Tuesday. Why don't they have it next Thursday or Wednesday? To me, this was a clear reason to try to deceive the public. They didn't want us to go and talk to each one. And it's a very pity. I mean, it's like something you do in elementary school, mean girls, mean boys. Enough on that. I want to talk today about the, something called the CVRA lawsuit. Los Altos was just hit with this by attorney Mr. Schinkman from Malibu in Southern California. This is the same lawsuit that hit Fremont Unified High School District, and I believe there's a threat to do it to CUSD also. And I believe that it might be something that will hit Cupertino. If people weren't aware, this is a misguided lawsuit based on state law. The state law is fine. But there's a cottage industry that several attorneys from Southern California are using to make money and intimidate cities, school districts, counties, et cetera. And Los Altos was threatened with this lawsuit saying that they had to break into voting districts. This was in April 27th. The city council in Los Altos rolled over a week ago, it was the same day, the 28th, and voted to allow the lawsuit to go through. And they are busily, tonight, I wanted to go to that meeting, they're breaking up the city of Los Altos into voting districts. I've already sent an email to the city council that I expect them in Cupertino, if this happens to us, that they not roll over and they defend Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next speaker is Peggy Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. First, I believe you're in violation of the Brown Act. The commissioner that is participating remotely is supposed to tell us whether or not anyone is in the room with him that is 18 or older. Also, we're supposed to be told under what provision of the Brown Act he is participating remotely. On another topic, I agree with Jennifer. It is really frustrating to not be allowed to go to a meeting for a park that is in your area because you've double booked. I hope that this is not a common occurrence. It just feels like you're jerking, you, not the planning commission, but the whole city is jerking people around by moving meetings because maybe somebody can't attend. Or you want something. It should just stick to the schedule and allow the public to attend the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next speaker is Rose Grimes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight about a concern regarding potential development. It's early in the process, but we wanted to make sure that you knew that neighbors were concerned. So I believe you have received a number of written communications from people who were not able to attend tonight, and there are a couple of other speakers. But my focus today is to draw together some elements of the extensive comments that you've been receiving, both in person and from the written submissions. Pugh Gosh has been very helpful in identifying the specific parcels, the APNs, which I assume has something to do with parcel numbers perhaps. But the neighbors are kind of colloquially referring to this idea or this proposal as a Linda Vista or a Vista Heights development. These parcels are currently accessible from Linda Vista Park, and we're the neighbors around that location. So my comments tonight relate only to this and not to any other item on your agenda. And the active input that you've received from a number of our neighbors is really just the result of my reminding them yesterday of your meeting today and of the opportunity for them to, at any time, regularly provide you with written comments or come and speak during the oral communications. I share many of the concerns that they have expressed specifically, but I'll adjust only a few of them tonight. My first concern has to do with the potential for increased fire hazard and decreased or challenging firefighting access in adding homes and resident activities to that steeply sloped and heavily wooded area that's pocketed between the park and the existing homes like mine at the top of the hillsides. A second concern would be for traffic safety, particularly with heavy vehicles during potential grading, road building, and construction activities. The corridor over there around Bub and McClellan is already congested, and particularly of concern are the children who are attending several local schools. Safe routes to school and traffic calming is an ongoing issue, as I'm sure you're well aware. And finally, the issue I wanted to bring up was transparency. There was a similar proposal to develop this land adjacent to Linda Vista Park in 2019. And as neighbors, we should have received a required notice from the developers as the city staff had provided them with all of the relevant contact addresses and information. We did not, at that time, in 2019, receive that notice and only became aware of the proposal's progress from other neighbors and from postings down in the park. So by commenting early in the process, the neighbors wanted to ensure proactively that you're aware that we're interested and to make sure that we ensure information flow should the project go further. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rose. Next speaker is Peter Friedland.
Yes. Thank you. Last time I was here, I was explaining the inverse squares law of radiation as Chair of the Technology Commission, with people with pitchforks and torches wanting to burn down the city council for new cell towers. So it's a much more pleasant atmosphere tonight. I just wanted to add a couple of comments to what Rose said. This was discussed before, and after much discussion at the Planning Commission and city council level, it was put on the back burner. It looks like the same basic group has come forward. Lots of housing, I mean, they claim there was, by law, some below-market housing, but the below-market housing seems to be between $2.5 and $3 million, not particularly affordable by most people in the service trades. A couple of things. In terms of the fire safety, besides the additional fire danger, as we understand the fire regulation rules, and we vigorously applaud Santa Clara Fire for enforcing them, if they build up to the level of what would be their property, their fence, and houses are near there, we as neighbors would have responsibility for clearing brush within, whether it's 30 feet or 30 yards, I forget, of that. And we already spend quite a bit of money in making sure all the area around our houses is fire safety. And we feel that adding additional burden there would be unfair. But more than that, last time, I don't know if any of you were still involved, back in 2019, there was considerable protest from the Audubon Society and other wildlife players because this is an active area of transit for much of the wildlife that's indigenous to the area. And there's been a desire to keep it natural. In fact, the developers then said, oh, well, we'll build a, basically a coyote bridge, you know, a coyote and mountain lion bridge, so they can cross the area safely. But we weren't particularly happy with that. The area, Rose mentioned the area of traffic, but as anyone who has tried to get from our house pretty much anywhere, either directly on Bub or on the back roads, anytime when school is getting in or getting out, it's already pretty horrendous. And adding a 40-plus home development would make our life even harder. One other thing I did want to mention is that the responsiveness from the city planning staff has not been perfect. When prompted, they provided some information, but they promised more, and they have not delivered the required more maps and others in the time they promised it. So anyway, thank you for your consideration. I'm sure this will come up more. We wanted to make sure you knew about it and knew that, basically, all the neighbors in what's called, what used to be called Grandview Estates are seriously concerned with the potential for this new development. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next speaker is Sujai Hajela.
Good evening, and thank you for not butchering my name. I still can't live down my graduation. You know, I've been, I came to this country in 1997, and I came to Cupertino. I formed a family here, three kids, two of, three of them through Montevista. And there was a reason I actually shifted to a certain place in Cupertino. And I'm here talking about, frankly, opposing the potential development, as Rose and Peter have already mentioned. I'll first take a community view of this. I've known this city personally because I was remodeling my house during COVID. My dad was moving in. I had no idea how to do it. But I came to the city. I went to the reception. I could clearly see the city cares. So I thought, okay, I want to make sure you know my views, and I'm hoping I get the same care back. The first part is about the community. So three kids driving to Kennedy, driving to Montevista, you all know, I don't need to tell you about that thing. It was so good after the incident, a horrible incident, that the bike lanes were built. But do you know what happens? How many people do you see driving still on their cell phones? And now you want to add 40 more homes. And there is a time where these bike lanes will not make any sense. Anyway, even they are congested. So my community part is, this whole thing is about safety. Yes, traffic, it's gone from three minutes to five minutes to nine minutes. Thank God you did the red light change. It takes now 11 minutes. But at the same time, what is the point of trying to do these safety measures for traffic when our kids will be exposed? We just cannot afford to do that. So that's more of a community thing. Now I'll make it a bit personal. Fire insurance, when I moved in, I did not realize how difficult it is. My, you all probably know this, my choices are very limited. And I don't know what this means, not just to me, but my neighbors and many others in the Cupertino district. The third thing, which I would say, which really, you know, bothers me is, I come to know stuff from Rose. I actually follow a lot of what the city does. I come to know things from Rose, from the neighbors. And that is not the Cupertino I moved in, in 1997. So in simple terms, the three points I wanted to raise, first is a community for the safety of our kids. I'm expecting my grandkids to also come to and visit us, and frankly, maybe grow in the city. I need that safety to be maintained. Number two is, think about all the issues, the load on the infrastructure, fire insurance is just one example. Okay? And last but not the least, I won't make it ask candidates transparency, but somehow it's surprising when I hear from neighbors what's going on. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Who's on? How many?
We have one remotely. San, San R.
Okay, welcome, San.
Good evening, Vice Chair. Nice to see you running the show, and I must say very confidently, so Chair Feng is not missed tonight. I do want to add to what Peggy said earlier and Jennifer as well. The overlap of the Parks and Rec and planning is very unfortunate. It is something that should be looked at. And I urge the chair, so the vice chair in the absence of the chair, to look into this, to see how this came about. All of us would like to be contributing to commissions as and when they occur and having these overlap, especially with important agendas like the Linda Vista Park, is impacting resident engagement. Was this incompetence? Was this negligence? Was this, somebody forgot to look at the calendar? Or was this by intent? And if so, who provides oversight? Who looks at these calendars? And who approved the overlap of two very important agendas for the city? And we don't look at Linda Vista Park every day. This is a new park. It doesn't happen every day. And we don't look at agendas around rezoning and the impacts of rezoning. So please take a look at how this came about. If it is by intent, I ask that we hold people accountable. We hold people accountable because the city cannot continue to run in this manner where stakeholders are treated last, be it taking us off the R chart, or be it giving these overlapping meetings. So please do look into this. The second thing I'd like to talk about is, for the Housing Element site list, I request that you please direct staff to publish the site list by address. The current site list is published by APN, and it is very cumbersome to look at the site list by APN. We'd have to individually look at APN and try to pull up the addresses. And once again, in the interest of stakeholder transparency and engagement, please make sure the Housing Element site list has a version published by address, and preferably even an interactive map, so that we can look at individual properties with high resolution to understand exactly what is and is not on that Housing Element site list. And finally, I'd like to add my support to the residents around Linda Vista Park. The hillside is not something we want to sacrifice. Our hillside, especially around the Linda Vista Park area, sees a lot of wildlife that comes into Stevens Creek Canyon. I use that area quite a bit at the Cupertino's Hill Swimming Racquet Club. And I've seen the tranquility of Linda Vista Park. And I ask that we please not sacrifice our hillside for the purpose of this development. And perhaps the commission can clarify if this is a builder's remedy project, this is a housing element project, what is the scope of this project and what sort of purview the city has on it, as well as what input residents can actually provide that can be constructive. So appreciate if you may clarify what is the scope of this project. I would add that the concerns around water drainage and soil stability is a major one on a steep hillside like that, any kind of removal of...
Thank you, San R.
Great. Was that all the, okay, great. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Any?
No items on the consent calendar.
I'd like to, is it okay for me to ask some questions about the oral communications? Yeah, so...
It should be a very brief.
Yeah, yeah. So the Vista Heights project, my understanding is, you know, it's, it's using state laws, you know, so you don't come to Planning Commission for approval. Is that correct?
Not entirely. It is using state laws to the extent that they are a pre-application. It's not an application yet, using the builder's remedy provisions of state law. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that it will not be coming to Planning Commission.
Because last time when it came, I remember they were trying to build, you know, seven units and, you know, and the proposal was rejected. And I hear, you know, some 40 units being built or something like that. So I haven't seen anything come to the commission, so...
Right. The last proposal was for about 24 units, and it was not authorized to move forward by the council at that time.
And is it with the staff at this point?
It's just a pre-application, so it's like a placeholder.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I think we're moving on to the agenda item number two. The municipal codes, specific plan, below-market rate mitigation, manual and zoning map amendments related to implementing the six-cycle housing element. I won't read all those numbers. Does staff have a report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. With me tonight, we have Luke Connelly, Assistant Director, and also Pugh Gosh, Plan Manager from the Planning Division. As you recall, this item was adopted by, Housing Element was adopted by the city council on May 14th. We're back. This is the result of that, to finish up the effort with the associated rezoning efforts. So with that, I'll just hand it off to Luke and Pugh for a presentation, and we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Luke Connelly, Assistant Director of Community Development. Before I get started tonight, Pugh Gosh and I will be kind of divvying up the presentation, which will not be nearly as long as the one you had on April 29th. We also have via Zoom Charlie Knox with Placeworks, who has done a lot of the work on the zoning standards and other things related to the housing element. I do want to start off tonight just to acknowledge we've had some communications that, I believe you got a memorandum on those. I just wanted to discuss that before we get into the slides, since it is not too long of a presentation. I think when we were here, April 29th, one of the focal points was strategy HE 136 of our housing element, which was our missing middle strategy. Got a lot of attention. That's essentially the one that would allow R2 standards to be used on most of the R1 corner lots and properties adjacent to commercial corridors. So about 1,700-plus R1 lots could implement that policy, which is in the housing element. So we've received comments on that in various ways about how it would apply to R1 properties in terms of, say, front yard setbacks in the R1A zone. Also, comments on duplex standards. For instance, in the zoning, we've proposed a floor area ratio of 55%. While we're not proposing any real substantive changes to the R2, that is part of the zoning package tonight, that floor area ratio would apply only to the R1 properties that would be using the R2 standards. So it's kind of in addition to R2 standards. We also had some other questions that were received on basically R2 development standards themselves, which are not on the agenda tonight. We're not rezoning the R2 district or changing standards, per se. The strategy was all about enabling R2 standards to be used on certain R1 lots. But we've had a number of comments on that, so I just wanted to clarify that's not going forward tonight in terms of changing development standards in the R2 district. We also had some questions about the R4 zoning district, which we'll be getting into later. That's a new zoning district. It would be the city's essentially most intensive residential zone, would correspond to the high, very high general plan land use designations. Currently, the standard we're proposing says five stories and 70 feet as a maximum building height. We had received a few comments and had conversations about why both? Why not just 70 feet, for instance? So as I said, right now, there is a both, both standards, five feet and 70, five stories and 70 feet. So I just wanted to clarify. I'm sure that's going to come up in the context of the discussion tonight. We also had had different comments about parking standards for both vehicles and bicycle parking. And I believe we had a comment, a written comment from a developer about our other new zoning district, the Town Home Combining District, concerning different standards related to floor area ratio, building height, and how floors could even be configured. So while those weren't initially addressed in the staff report, because some of those comments came in today, I just wanted to get those out there because I think they're going to be part of the discussion this evening. So I'll start and do the first part of the presentation. Again, it's, we're really focused tonight on the rezoning piece of the housing element. The city council on May 14th adopted the housing element, and general plan, there were general plan amendments done at that time as well. So we're really at the phase now where we're implementing the housing element. This is something in the letter we received from HCD on April 10th that I think we covered with, it's essentially, we have a conditional approval to get the zoning done. If you don't get the zoning done in HCD's eyes, you don't have a housing element that could be certified. So that's really, this is kind of the final step in this long process. So for the agenda tonight, I'm going to give you an overview. A lot of it's going to look really familiar, but again, I don't know if there's some people who are new to this, or just to refresh them on what the housing element is, what our timeline has been on this project, to go over our priority housing sites and the RENA allocation and how those relate. Then we're going to get into the rezoning and the scope of the rezoning, the new districts we're proposing, text changes, things that are being done for internal consistency sake, and other related amendments, like to the heart of the city and the city's BMR manual, where we have one change as well. Then we'll get into staff recommendation and next steps. I just threw in the last bullet again, to remind people, the housing element itself was adopted on May 14th, and we have, per our settlement agreement, 120 days in which to enact the zoning. Okay, so we can get into the overview now. I know this slide looks familiar, but I'm going to run through it again. Is, the housing element is one of your required general plan elements, and is the one that is updated the most frequently. It's required to be done so every eight years. We are now in the cycle, the planning cycle 2023 to 2031. So we're already about a year and a half into that cycle. The deadline to have had the housing element certified was January 31 of last year, which Cupertino did not make, nor did many other cities in the state and the ABAG region. What we're, what you're really doing when you update your housing element, again, is you're studying and planning for the housing needs in the community for that planning period, the eight years, 2023 to 2031. In particular, you're focused on providing housing for people who live within the region and are at all different income levels. As I had said earlier, the State Housing and Community Development Department is the oversight agency who will determine certification. So while our city council has already adopted the housing element, and we're considering the zoning this evening, it's HCD's ultimate certification that finalizes this process. I'll just go through this quickly. Again, this is the contents of what your housing element is. So the five red rectangles at the top, that's really the components of your housing element, your needs assessment, your assessment of fair housing, your constraints to housing development. Those first three are really the foundation documents where you're looking at identifying what works, what doesn't work, what your futures, needs are in your community. And then really acting on getting your resources inventory, resources in your sites inventory in order to address the needs that you've identified through constraints and fair housing. You also, your key piece, your housing element, are your policies and programs. Under the resources and sites inventory, you'll see zoning and capacity. Those sites have already been identified. But again, tonight, we're kind of at the final step in this process in enacting the rezoning to get the housing element where it can be certified. In enacting the rezoning to get the housing element where it can be certified. The related updates to the housing element. We're looking at zoning tonight, but we also, as part of the housing element getting adopted. We have already done the first couple of bullets, the conforming general plan changes. We've had changes to land use and appendices. The mobility elements and its appendices, all of these have already gone to the City Council and been adopted. The middle bullet tonight embold the conforming rezoning. That's where we're at tonight. That's the focus of this. While there are some related changes, rezoning is really what we're here for. We also have after tonight additional state law requirements that will focus on the health and safety element, which must be updated along with the housing element. And there will also be. Objective design standards, which we will begin working on shortly and are hoping to have completed by the end of the year. As we move from a very discretionary process to a ministerial one, it's going to be important to have standards in place that are enforceable. I just wanted to go over this again, since we're dealing with the sixth cycle, just to compare it for people who have been either frustrated by the process or wondering why this has seemed so much more onerous. Is the fourth cycle for Cupertino, we were looking at getting over four times the housing that we had had in the prior, the prior housing cycle. As the Bay Area has built out, that leaves very few undeveloped sites. We essentially don't have any anymore. You're looking pretty much at redeveloping all of the properties you have in order to meet your Rena. Cupertino is not alone at that. A big difference between this cycle and the previous cycle is this time we're looking at having fifty-eight individual properties in order to meet the Rena. Last time we had five. Almost seventy percent of the properties we have are looking at having development at fifty units acre or more. So it's a significant intensification for what has been a primarily suburban area like Cupertino and and the west side of the county. We have also had additional legislation that's tightened up policies and programs, has provided a higher level of detail. Has required you to quantify and be able to hit markers as to when you're going to be completing these programs. There's greater accounting accountability to produce housing. So. I think housing elements in the past, it was fair to say that all you had to be able to do was demonstrate that you could meet your Rena. Now there's a lot more. Making cities take a pro proactive approach to actually getting the housing built, and that's going to be shown in our annual reporting. There's more requirements on site selection, which is reflected in the sites we chose. Less discretion on approving approving housing developments and affirmatively fair housing standards, which we've talked about quite a bit in earlier meetings. We can go on. For, I am hoping that this slide is not a factor, but I do always like to touch on this. If you do not comply. You can be faced with loss of land use, local land use and zoning control and dealing with things such as the builder's remedy, which the city has one project. On file and several preliminary applications for such projects. Lawsuits and attorney fees, which is something else we've dealt with in this cycle, having settled a lawsuit in January of this year. Yeah, can also affect our eligibility for grant funding. You can face financial penalties, court issued fines. Increased ministerial approval of projects and ultimately cities can end up in something like receivership. Okay, I'll briefly go over the timeline and what has been about a three-year process. The earlier years, which we've now kind of mercifully condensed into two thousand twenty-one to March twenty twenty-four. Outlines, we've had a significant number of meetings, about thirty plus in total in different settings, whether at commission, council or community workshops. But then jumping ahead to April, just a few months ago. That was when our third draft of our of our housing element, we had received notice from HCD on April ten. That we complied with state law contingent on getting our priority housing sites rezoned, which is why we're here tonight. After that time, less than a week, we had a City Council study session on the sixteenth. We took the housing element to the Housing Commission for its review on April twenty-fifth and were last at the Planning Commission on April twenty-ninth. Following that, two weeks later, we were before the Planning Commission. And at that time, the housing element was adopted along with the certain general plan amendments as well. So that brings us to tonight on June eleventh, where we're here before the Planning Commission, looking for your recommendation on the rezoning and other related changes to implement the housing element. Following tonight, the next scheduled meeting would be July second before the City Council, where they would consider the rezoning. And if that were to go through, we would have a second reading on July sixteenth. And as I said, we would have subsequent related items with objective design standards and the health and safety element coming later this year. We'll go through the Rena sites inventory again. A lot of people are familiar with this. This diagram shows all the darkened sites are our priority housing sites within the city. So there are fifty-eight individual properties. Which, since several of them abut each other, results in about thirty-five development sites. At the top of the diagram at Stelling and Homestead, you'll see a red X on a site. When we came to you in April twenty-ninth, those were four parcels associated with the Valley Church, which had been on our priority sites list for about two years. Prior to the City Council's consideration in May, we were contacted by Valley Church. Who had expressed that they did not want to be included in the housing element and did not want their sites rezoned. That was four parcels. That consist of volleyball court, tennis courts and some parking. So they're essentially undeveloped parcels at that. It was somewhat of a significant hit in that those properties could have yielded about three hundred and forty-five units, based on the density we were estimating. Fortunately, we had a very large buffer, which we had talked about at earlier meetings. We were at about thirty-five percent. On April twenty-nine, so little in excess of what HCD recommends for a buffer. But I think this actually shows why you need a buffer in place. Because this is the type of thing that could happen later in the process, which leaves you sort of scrambling for additional sites. This just happened right before the City Council meeting. So. There are four fewer parcels since we've removed the Valley Church. That was part of the council's actions, so those sites are no longer in play at this time. Okay, so I just touched on what we did. You initially saw sixty-two sites. On May ninth, we received a letter from Valley Church, the Valley Church. We now have a buffer of about twenty-eight percent. So it's down from the thirty-five. And if we go to the next slide, it sort of show what this means. The column all the way on the left that says twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one Rena, that is the city's Rena for this cycle by income category. So at the bottom, you see the four, five, eight, eight. That is our Rena number. The second column shows the capacity we have through our various pipeline projects. So things like Valco and other sites make up that twenty-four hundred and fifty-two units. So. Still over half of our Rena is being accounted for through pipeline projects. The next two columns show what is in the current housing element. So they're pretty much divided if you went to appendix before. Which we don't need to get into in detail tonight since it's adopted. But our sites are are almost equally divided between exclusively residential and mixed mixed-use sites. So that's the fifteen-ten. And seventeen-twenty-seven numbers in the third and fourth column at the bottom. So those would be the additional units added to the pipeline, which as you move to the right, would then get us to our total capacity. So when the housing element came before you in April twenty-nine, we had over sixty-two hundred potential units because the Valley Church was included. We're now down to fifty-eight eighty-one, which, as I said, still puts us about thirteen hundred units over our Rena or twelve ninety-four. So that is the total surplus we have. But as you look at the very last column under surplus, and if you look at it by income category. You can see that with Valley Church parcels removed, our surplus on the lower income categories was reduced. We have a surplus, but only a hundred and fifty-seven units for the low, very low categories and ninety-two units for moderate. Which is pretty typical. It's a lot easier to meet your above moderate or market rate requirements, but. The important thing is in losing those sites and still having a buffer where you can meet all income levels, we do not have an issue with HCD. So this isn't something that's going to require additional HCD consideration. I just wanted to go over this. We discussed it with the council on May fourteenth, but if you weren't watching that. That's something I wanted everybody to be understanding that despite the loss of those parcels, we are okay and have discussed this with HCD staff already. Okay, I think I've done my part for tonight until we get to questions. So I'll leave Pugh to do the difficult part with the zoning.
Can we ask questions on this part? Yeah. So can you go back to that map that you showed? The sites that are concentration, yeah. So the one, the. Bottom left corner, right, on the Yvelin, Yvelich Avenue or something like that? So it's.
Yeah, the one that's sort of by itself to the west.
Can you give some specifics on, you know, what's happening there? Like, what's being planned for that?
In conversations with the owners, which we've had. That's been involved since early on. It's proposed as a density of twenty to thirty-five units per acre. Believe it is an R-three townhome site. So, which we'll be getting into as we talk about rezoning, but. I believe the owner's intent all along has been to look at townhomes in around a twenty unit per acre range, which is very typical for townhomes. That's kind of the standard housing density. So it's four parcels. I believe you have four single-family homes currently on those in total. I'm not sure if there has been a developer, a single developer in contract. I know we have had inquiries and as I've said, we've talked to the owners about that as well. Probably the one interesting nuance about that is, and it shows up on this map slightly. Is in nineteen sixty-nine, there was a dedication for cul-de-sac. So the city actually has that right of way. That right of way is, was really set up for a single-family development at the time, which would have made sense. With townhomes, it really is not going to have any value. So the assumption is that the city would need to be compensated for that property, the cul-de-sac portion. Which would then become part of the development. But to date, we don't have a plan or anything on file.
So, so a parcel of that size, you know, if we have our way, we would have probably what density would have gone. Gone towards. Because I've seen, you know, quite a few other parcels that are much smaller, getting, you know, fifty, seventy unit density. Versus, you know, this one is, you know, twenty unit density. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And I think based on its location, you know, it's not on a major corridor. The twenty seem to make sense. I do believe, though. In two thousand twenty-two, when this came before the Planning Commission in July, the recommendation was for a minimum thirty.
Thirty or fifty, I think.
Yeah, because at that time, we didn't have ranges. It was just minimum. So I believe it was a thirty minimum. At the City Council meeting in the fall or end of August. The property owners had spoke up requesting a lower density because they had planned townhome development, which was why at that time it went from. The commission recommendation of thirty units per acre to twenty units per acre.
Okay, so so if we want to request lower density, that's something that we honor. Is that right?
At that time, yes. I mean, if if it had. Higher density actually zoned in as a priority housing site, you're going to need to meet that minimum. So if somebody wanted to go lower than twenty now, that would not be feasible.
Okay, yeah. Can you go to the table that the units being built?
I just want to make sure we keep it to five minutes because we need to keep going. So, and including any questions Stephen or I or. Tajesh might have, just to kind of keep things moving.
What's a five-minute rule?
Five minutes per person. How's that?
Okay. So so this table, this doesn't include, you know, the coronary units, that's seventeen hundred coronary units that might bring in additional housing. Is that correct?
That's right. It it doesn't include that because that policy is not related to accommodating our Rena. It has to do with affirmatively furthering fair housing, so a different category.
Okay.
And so those units, it's it's hard to know how many it would produce or estimate. So those are not included in here.
And and pipeline capacity doesn't include the hundred percent of, you know, what's approved already, right? It's some percentage of a.
Correct, yes. We only get credit for a certain amount. We get credit for, I think it's eighty-five percent for the hundred percent residential sites and about seventy-five percent for the mixed-use sites.
Okay.
Actually, I think it's ninety-five for all residential, seventy-five for mixed-use. Right?
Okay, thank you.
Stephen, do you have any questions?
Sorry, wrong button. That percentage you mentioned does not, nothing for the Hamptons, right? That's off the table?
Right, the Hampton, yeah. Excuse me, the the Hamptons, while it has an approval valid through two thousand twenty-six, it is not part of our pipeline.
And Irvine has said they're not building or what?
I've heard nothing at all. I haven't heard a yes or a no, and I think their silence is construed by HCD as a no and and the fact that there's been no progress. Since they've had that approval in place. But if they built, we would get credit for any units.
There's no progress at Marina or Valco either, right? So, and they're all approved.
Yeah, at least I think Valco did some demolition, but that's about it.
Right, okay. So you mentioned, let me go to my notes here. You mentioned how we're going to be evaluated on what the city can do to get the housing built. Not just, not just having a housing element and doing the rezoning.
We will need to be able to demonstrate that we're actively meeting with developers, putting information on our website, communicating with affordable housing developers. I think we have a lot of commitments. In our housing element, we're going to be need to be able to document and show by certain dates that we're doing those things.
So do we not do that for the fifth cycle?
I think we did it, but I think we're going to have to do it at a heightened level. And I think you've made firmer commitments to doing so is is really the big difference.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how we force people that take an entitlement to actually build. That's always been the challenge.
And that's a difficult. We do not build. We can make it as easy as possible, but you are correct. I mean. High interest rates, high labor costs, high land costs are very difficult to circumvent. So. I think we just need to be doing as a city, all we can do to show we're trying to get housing built.
So what what percentage of our Rena is townhomes? Because those seem to be what gets built, not the high density.
I've not, I've not calculated that. We have, I believe sixteen of the fifty-eight sites have a townhome overlay district. And certainly much of the city are planned development zones along Stevens Creek and that are already suitable for townhomes. So. It's not like only those sites that we have here of the fifty-eight that have a townhome designation could be townhomes.
Okay, so the other ones could be townhomes. They're just not.
Absolutely. They're just not priority housing sites, but they can absolutely develop as townhomes. I think our our thinking was. Townhomes aren't having the trouble to get built compared to the other higher density stuff. So we're focused more on that, having, you know, again, almost seventy percent of our sites are fifty units per acre or more, which is well beyond townhome density.
Right, okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Tajesh, did you have any questions?
Nothing for me yet.
Okay. Pugh?
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission. I just wanted to start by going over the scope of what we are rezoning tonight. We wanted to reiterate that the only amendments that are being proposed tonight are those related to housing element conformance, to make sure. That we can get our exposure and make sure that we have all the rezoning in place that is required to get our housing element certified. With regard to the rezoning, we are making text amendments and these text amendments are to the municipal code. And also the specific plan, and I'll kind of go over those separately. With regard to the text amendments in the municipal code, they are being done for largely three reasons. One is to establish new zoning designations because we adopted new land use designations. We had to come up with new zoning standards to kind of fit those higher density land use designations. We're also modifying certain existing regulations. I'll go over those. We're making edits for consistency with state law and just minor edits for internal consistency. Those are the big buckets under which these text amendments are being proposed. In addition to that, we're making map amendments and those are related, limited really just to the priority housing sites. So we're basically making sure that everything that we committed to in the housing element is what we're zoning for right now. And in addition to that, I just wanted to make sure and clarify that the R-one properties that are on the corner lots and abutting commercial zoning districts. Are not being rezoned outright. They're just, there is a, and I'll go over that. There's a provision for allowing duplex development on these properties. Through a certain process and that's codified in the municipal code, the way that we're proposing right now. With regard to the new standards, the R-four zoning district is one of the 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 big changes to this. With regard to the new standards, the R four zoning district is one of the, the, the big changes to this municipal code. And I wanted to throw in a map to indicate of the priority housing sites, which ones are the R four, are being impacted by the R four zoning districts. And as you can see, these are mainly along the major corridors. So there are, along our arterials and the major corridors, mainly along Stevens Creek, De Anza and Homestead, and a couple along Wolf as well. So this, basically what this does, this zoning district is being established to accommodate densities that are higher than fifty dwelling units per acre. It aligns the high, very high, which is the fifty to sixty-five dwelling units per acre, and the very high, which is the sixty-five to eighty dwelling unit per acre general plan designations. As Luke was mentioning, about forty of the fifty-eight priority housing sites are zoned R four. And so this zoning district establishes the rules for the, for developments that would occur on these particular sites. I think Luke mentioned this at the very start of our presentation. As proposed, the height limitation over here is limited to seventy feet maximum, which is established with the general plan amendment that occurred back in May. In addition to that, there is a belt and suspenders for five floors that is included in that. And that is based on recommendation from our consultant, who is also available online to answer any questions. Just in terms of scale, we wanted to give you a sense of what that would look like. That scale is similar to what the Apple Infinite Loop campus buildings are, and those were constructed back in the early nineties. And also similar in scale to what the new Westport buildings are, the Westport buildings might be a little bit taller, actually. With regard to the front setbacks, we're proposing to keep the front setbacks the same as currently perceived by the public with the heart of the city setbacks. So for floors one, two, three, it is a nine-foot setback from the property line. And the property line is set back quite a ways away from the, the street where the, where you actually perceive the street to be. In addition to that, there would be an additional nine-foot step back for floors four and five. With regard to side setbacks, because of the higher densities, we needed to modify those standards to accommodate that density. The current standard in the HOC, which is kind of where most of our development occurs, is greater of ten feet or half the height of the building. However, that standard doesn't necessarily lend itself to the heightened density, and as a result, what is being proposed is ten feet. Plus, if there is a lower-density primary residential building located next to it, there would be an additional ten-foot setback on the side for any stories that would be higher than that. In terms of rear setbacks, the existing HOC standard is a twenty-foot minimum with a one to one and a half height to setback ratio, which also would not accommodate the densities that we are looking to accommodate with this particular zoning district. And as a result, we have proposed, and this came in as the red lines as part of the supplemental memo that was sent out earlier today, the setback would be thirty feet for floors one, two and three, and with an additional step back of fifteen feet for floors four and five. Another new zoning district, which is a combining district, this is the new townhome combining district that is being proposed. It is really only for use with an existing residential, in general, overarchingly, combining zoning districts are only available for use with existing residential zoning districts. Sixteen of the fifty-eight priority housing sites are combined with the R three base zoning. Essentially, the goal is to allow opportunities for a lower-scale interface, particularly where they interface with neighborhoods, single-family homes and other lower-density housing types, and to also offer different housing types within a development. So there could be a mix of apartments and townhomes that, that developers would be able to offer. The height is a general plan standard, which is of thirty feet max for these townhomes. In terms of the front setback, it must meet the base underlying residential zoning. So for purposes of R three, it would be twenty feet, unless you're adjacent to a major roadway, in which case you would be similar to what Heart of the City is. The side and rear setbacks are also established with the townhome combining district. This is essentially six feet on the side for fire safety, and rear setbacks are, I believe they're about fifteen feet in the ordinance. Another chapter that was added to the municipal code, which is emergency shelters, this is required to be allowed by right in at least one zoning district. And so it is allowed in the BQ and the R four zoning district. We already allowed it in the BQ zoning district and based on recommendations, we're also proposing to allow it in the R four zoning district, which is again, near the major transit corridors, near services and things like that. We are proposing to move existing standards from the BQ zoning related to emergency shelters into this new chapter and also establish additional basic standards for emergency shelters. Another thing that is being proposed is to codify a byright approval process for priority housing sites, for housing developments on priority housing sites. And that is required by law, essentially, if a priority housing site includes a development that has at least a twenty dwelling unit per acre minimum and twenty percent of the total units are for lower-income households, then there's a specific process that, it has to be ministerially, ministerially processed. So, and, and basically, the only thing that you can do is objective design review for it. And so what is proposed is that up to fifty units, it would be an administrative hearing process, and fifty units or plus would come to the planning commission for approval.
Can I ask one question? Twenty percent not of base plus density bonus, but twenty percent of total?
Base plus density bonus, twenty percent of the total.
Right, so you don't get to have no, no low-income units on the density bonus, it's, it's twenty percent total, period?
Yes, of the total. Just, just as another clarification, that any other approvals that are required for that particular development, for example, if there's a subdivision map or something else that is required, that still has to follow all the other procedures of state law, so that's not carved out with this process. Moving on to the second buck category, which is modification of existing standards, there are standards proposed to be modified in the R three zoning district. The structure of the ordinance is modified a little bit, because originally, the ordinance applied to basically any kind of development, all the way from fourplexes up to, you know, two-hundred-unit apartment complex. So the way that the ordinance has been restructured is to kind of carve out the standards for fourplexes and then having another standard for developments that are five or more units. The regulations for developments with five or more units have been modified to accommodate the higher densities that are anticipated. And language regarding maintenance of common areas, et cetera, has been added just for clarification and making sure that all of that can be implemented once a project is approved. There are also, as the vice chair mentioned, there's a bunch of other chapters that are being amended. However, those amendments are not necessarily very great in scope. There's conformance with state law regarding different types of housing that must be allowed by right. And so those are modified in permitted, conditional and other, there's a chapter regarding that about residential uses. And so that chapter has been modified to be consistent with state law. There have been some definitions that have been updated for consistency with state law, particularly related to those types of housing types that I was just talking about. There's a, a process for allowing duplexes using the current R two standards are in compliance, just to, to get it into compliance with our missing middle strategy as a placeholder for now, just to make sure that there's a process in place. And that is codified in the R one chapter. With regard to parking standards, there have been some quick and easy fixes with regard to parking standards. Under new state law, most of the Santa, Santa Clara, most of the Stevens Creek corridor east of eighty-five is exempt from parking requirements. So we wanted to take a good look at that and just propose standards that made sense, knowing that they're already exempt from parking requirements. We've modified the parking minimums for R three from two per unit to one per unit. We've established a one-per-unit parking standard for townhomes and R four developments. In addition to that, we've also modified findings for housing developments to ensure a commitment that has been made in the housing element per HCD direction. So that is also a part of the packet tonight. In addition to that, there have been certain other small, minor edits made to make sure that certain chapters are referenced. These are in chapter fourteen point fifteen, which is in title fourteen, related to Wheelo, a water-efficient landscape ordinance, a minor correction to chapter seventeen point oh eight, related to environmental standards. In addition to that, I mentioned this at the beginning of my presentation, that the Heart of the City specific plan is being updated, and there's just text amendments and a, a figure which is being inserted to conform with the zoning map, which is also being amended. So that is being changed, and that's part of the packet. With regard to the BMR mitigation manual, it has been updated to conform with the housing element to make sure that the BMR, BMR program applies to five or more development with five or more units, as opposed to the current seven-unit standard. Lastly, it's the zoning map that's being updated. It's been updated to reflect the zoning district changes that have come about as a result of the general plan amendments and also to reflect the new priority housing sites. And new colors and labels have been added to indicate these new designations, both the R four and the TH. And it clearly identifies the priority housing sites as is required by state law. I did want to add that as part of the supplemental memo that went out this afternoon, there were a couple of minor edits. There were clear corrections that needed to be made. One was just a technical correction related to something that, an error the codifiers had made, so we're just correcting that. And then I mentioned the rear yard setback in the town, in the R H, R four zoning district. As far as environmental assessment goes, as you are aware and you've seen this slide before, that there was a lawsuit that was filed back in February twenty twenty-three and in, that was settled in January twenty-four, and as a result of the actions of settlement, this entire action is exempt from CEQA. And so because we prepared an environmental assessment and adopted that as part of the general plan, all of these actions are exempt from CEQA. With that, our recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the resolutions to recommend that the city council adopt with the red lines that were proposed with the supplemental memo, the three attachments that were presented for your consideration tonight. And with that, I end the presentation and we're ready for questions.
Great, thank you, PU. If I can just request that we, we'll have time for discussion later. So if we can just keep it to five minutes max per commissioner for now, before we go to public comments, that would be great.
Great. So PU, can you go back to the slide where the setback is changed from ten feet or half height to ten feet plus ten feet? So, does that mean ten, an additional ten feet for every additional story? Or just ten feet, no matter how many?
Just ten feet, no matter how many.
And is this required by state law, or is this something we're just doing?
Well, we're trying to come up with standards that make sense for the density that is being proposed. This is more than fifty dwelling units per acre. Additionally, we can set the standard to whatever we want. We just want to recognize that there is state density bonus out there, which can waive pretty much any standard.
All right, they can just, right, okay. And then, can you go to the parking minimum slide? Okay, so for AB twenty ninety-seven, right, for Stevens Creek, there's no parking requirements. But the second bullet, modified to reduce required minimums for R three zone, is that state law, or is that our idea?
Well, there is density bonus parking standards, which allow the use of certain parking standards that are codified in the, in state law. So essentially, it could be down to, in some cases, half a parking space per unit. So what we wanted to do was come up with something that made sense for R three zoning districts. These are the minimums, this is not what a developer necessarily, you know, provides. In all, in many cases, I'm assuming they will want to provide more.
Yeah, I, I'm just really concerned about developers exporting parking onto public streets instead of providing enough parking for their residents. So, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't really like this change, but could they, can they use waivers and concessions to waive it if we did it two units per, two spaces per unit?
Like I said, yeah, there is a parking standard in the density bonus itself to reduce it to quite a low number.
Okay, very good.
If I could just add, I, I know a lot of cities have gone to, instead of dealing with parking minimums, parking maximums. San Jose, for instance, did it, I think, about a year ago, and a number of cities have, we're not going there. It's essentially, we're still putting a minimum. But I think as we're finding in most projects, like townhomes, we're never seeing anything under than two covered per unit, because that's what the developer wants. So they can still go above this, we're not capping what they can do, we're just providing a minimum.
Okay, and we received quite a few emails regarding the R one A thirty-foot setback. So can you comment on that? Why it's changed from thirty to twenty?
I don't, I don't know that it is necessarily changed. All, all we're stating is the process, and we're saying that you can get to use the R two standards, and the R two standards allow the twenty. And so if it is the commission's desire to recommend what the, you know, community is wanting, that is something that can certainly be recommended.
Right, I, I would recommend it, but I don't know how my colleagues feel. And that's all I have, thank you.
I had a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead, Tijesh.
If I could go back to the setbacks. The one question I had was regarding the rear setback. Just concerned or question about the thirty feet that was mentioned? Give a little bit of, yes, and the proposed for thirty feet for one, two and three, and it basically up to forty-five for fours, four and five. It wa, why the need for an additional ten compared to what the existing standard is?
I think the way that we wanted to look at it is essentially, we wanted to keep the rules simple, so we didn't want to establish this, the slope setback that exists currently, where you kind of have the, the ziggurat, am I using the right word? Look to the building, and what we, we also looked to San Jose to see what their standards were for, they have pretty, you know, they have much taller buildings, but they, their, their setbacks are essentially pretty simple from, from an implementation perspective. And also what we wanted to be able to accommodate based on the densities that we're looking at here.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to visualize, practically speaking, what a building with fifty dwelling units on an acre, losing ten feet per floor on all four sides, essentially. Is it going to look like a, like a pyramid? Because it's going to be so small at the top by the time you get to the fifth floor, that it's just going to look ridiculous. I, 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 I feel like we're, we're solving one problem, but at the same time, we're never, we're kind of not letting a property developer get to that fifty units just by cutting down so much. I mean, ten feet on, on four sides is a lot of space that we're giving up. I, I'm not really sure, especially on the rear side where nobody's seen that it's not a, not a shadow on the street issue. It's potentially a neighbor on the back, but if it was just a consistent thirty feet, you could put plenty of trees and landscaping. I don't see why you would go up to essentially six, no, you said the thirty feet plus ten per floor. So the maximum would be fifty feet, am I reading that right?
No, no, it would just be a total of forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's a lot of, that's still a lot of space from the property owner.
True, and I, I just wanted to comment that these sites are about three hundred and fifty feet deep, most of these.
Okay.
The ones along Stevens Creek certainly are. So these are not necessarily very, very, very small, narrow or, or shallow lots, these are typically very deep lots.
Got it.
Yeah, I've just wanted to add to that too, is that, you know, again, we're looking at seventy-foot building heights in, in this zoning district as well. I know the one example, we had looked at it, dealt with buildings that could be in excess of a hundred feet in San Jose, near Santana Row, but it had even a larger separation, I think the first floor was required to be forty-five feet. So, which is proportional, the buildings would be taller, but I think some of these sites could be, for instance, on the north side of Stevens Creek, where you have single-family neighborhoods right behind them, and a seventy-foot building close to the property line, at that rear property line, could seem fairly large. So, but, I mean, I, I do appreciate the commissioner's comment about not trying to have that ziggurat look on all four sides of the building. I think having it closest to the most sensitive or smaller-scale use does make sense. And I know when we were going through this process two years ago, that was pretty I know when we were going through this process two years ago, that was pretty consistently expressed by the commission, by council, and by the community. So I think that is something to consider is to keep that, you know, same way we're trying to encourage if townhomes went in as an interface between the larger building and single-family, it just makes for a better transition. But it is, again, it's a sort of a tricky thing because the scale of buildings has gotten larger and a five-story building is a five-story building. We're just trying to, we're just trying to accommodate it in the best way we can.
So, on the R4 height, the 70 feet, the developer could use, you know, like state laws such as like density bonus and stuff like that, and could go higher than 70, is that right?
Correct.
So what's the maximum that they could go on R4?
There is no maximum.
Oh, so they can build 1,000 feet high?
Correct.
Wow, crazy.
I mean, I guess the premise of the zoning exercise now is we're zoning as though density bonus does not exist, knowing full well it does. We're trying to encourage people to follow the rules, but with 100, if you have 100% affordable housing project, you really don't have limitations on what you can build through density bonus law.
Okay. And our own A comment that Stephen was talking about, quite, I read through quite a few emails, so there is also a R, I, R1I and E, so can you comment on what's the difference between those and, you know, why those are exempt but not this one?
So, the R1I is a zoning overlay which allows single-story structures. So that was the reason why those single-story structures were, you know, it was being carved out to say this zoning district had a single-story, story structure. The R1E is the Eichler zoning district, which is by nature, it's the design of the buildings itself. The R1A, you know, if this is the council, I mean, the planning commission's recommendation to include the 30 feet, I mean, we weren't necessarily carving that out. There are no other special design features about it except for really this, you know, the front setback, which, you know, if that is what the commission wants to do, they can certainly recommend.
Yeah, my preference would be, you know, to honor the request, R1A, because if that's what the residents' community want, you know, and we have done that, you know, in that property where, you know, the owner said, you know, that he wants to go just 20 units townhomes, and, you know, we downgraded from 50 to 20, right? And if the community wants, you know, R1A to be left alone, then that's what we should do. Thank you.
I think we open it up to public comments now. Thank you. Okay, we have Jennifer Griffin, welcome Jennifer.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commission and staff. I'm Jennifer Griffin. I will tell you right now, I am completely exhausted by the fifth, the sixth cycle. The fourth and fifth cycles were not like this. This has become like taking a final exam in college over and over again that you dream about for 40 years. I have one of those, believe it or not. We, and I don't blame the staff, the staff and the consultants have worked brilliantly with this terrible, hideous dump of a whatever that they have dumped on us in every city in California. I followed the Los Altos housing element because the parking lot of my church and two other churches are in the housing element of Los Altos. They didn't tell the pastor, they didn't tell the congregation, and they never took them out. They're still there. Why? Okay. At this point, I'm going to start out, I have sent several letters to the city and to the Cupertino City Council. No one addressed the bad RENA numbers. We say we do STEM in this city, but what example are we setting for our children, future engineers of California, if we are abusing statistical numbers? I know for a fact that those RENA numbers are wrong. I'm ready to start looking at those people to go to jail. They have been dragging Hunter Biden's personal life all over for whatever reason. But the people that came up with the 4588 had no statistical background, and I think they did it to defraud the people in California. Look at the mayhem that is the fallout from these bad numbers. We had 1,000 last time, maybe we had 2,000 this time, but we went through a pandemic, people are leaving the state, the state has a flat population growth. I know that for a fact. I belong to three anti-Scott Wiener groups, I'm going to call them that. We're NIMBYs, good. But I, I think that people need to go to jail, that this is, this is fraudland. It is time for audits. People have abused their public places and defrauded the public with bad statistics. Don't put missing middle in the middle of the housing element, this thing about the corner lots. I had someone who knows better tell me that the HCD forced the city to put the missing middle in to get the extra 25%, and she knows what she's talking about. So I have a lot of problems with this whole thing. Let's send some of these people to jail, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Would you like to use the overhead, please? Good evening, commissioners, planning commission and staff. First, I'd like to thank the staff for sticking to the subject and focusing on the housing element. I live in Lynnwood Acres, it's a 64 homes on two streets, Randy Lane and Larry Way. They're large lots, 30-foot front setbacks that includes the public easement, and we are designated semi-rural. The purpose of strategy HE1.3.6 is to allow increased density that blends into the existing neighborhoods. Homes in purple here are affected by this strategy. As homes are remodeled using the R2 provision, they will build to the 20-foot front setback, destroying the look of the neighborhood. It will become a hodgepodge of homes, some at 20 feet, some at 30 feet. The homes using the 20-foot setback will look like monster homes and block views of their neighbors. Of the provisions we have in our R1-A overlay, the 30-foot front setback is the most important to preserve the look of the neighborhood. There are three overlay zones in Cupertino, the Eichler, the single-story, and Lynnwood Acres. The proposed MUNI code changes have provisions for the Eichler and the single-story but not Lynnwood Acres. Please add this provision to the R1A to preserve our front setback. Help our neighborhood transition successfully, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Do we have anybody online?
We have two speakers online. First is Junhong Hughes.
Welcome, Junh.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to comment here, and thank you for all your efforts in the proposal for rezoning. All the effort is appreciated, and to be clear, also, I'm just speaking for myself in this comment, but I really hope that we can see kind of some more ambition in this draft in the future rather than some of the elements that are supposed to be. Just because I think we've seen that, you know, the combination of all these like tiny restrictions around, you know, height limits, story, parking standards, maximum lot coverage limits, the floor area ratio requirements, these kind of death by a thousand cuts really reduces the capacity of housing and the opportunities that we can give for people to move into our city. So, you know, I really support the application of the R2 standards on corner lots. I think it's really cool to see, you know, those corner lots be developed in a way that like doesn't really affect the neighborhood that much, but is still a way to gently upstone and give more housing opportunities. And I would encourage the lowering of setbacks across all zones and really echo and support Mr. Mysteries' comments, especially in regard to the application of setbacks in the R4 zone and maybe like unintended consequences that come with that, right? And furthermore, I hope that we can revisit the height limits and parking standards in the R4 zone, especially since this is supposedly, supposed to enable our densities as well. If possible, it'd be cool to hear if Mr. Knox could clarify the thinking of instituting both the story restriction and the height limit on the zone, just because frankly, as a layperson, I guess I don't understand sort of doing those. And generally, just on parking standards, I think, as suggested earlier, we really could be more aggressive in terms of, you know, instituting a maximum, but if we're not going to institute a maximum, I guess there is a question of like why even have a parking standard at all, especially for like multi-family zone and some of our dense zones at the R4 or R3. And then finally, just responsible some commentary on the Lindavis to have the application, and it is relevant to kind of, I think, the whole rezoning effort, because, you know, while I am sympathetic to the environmental concerns of further expanding to the fringes of, you know, supremacists.
I think, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but you have, it's, it's not on the agenda, it's so, if we, yeah, we can't talk about.
I'll keep it to just the draft proposal.
Great, thank you.
But, I really would encourage that people support and lend their voices to denser developments and ambition in the draft proposal if they are concerned, truly concerned, and not just opposing new neighbors moving, you know, their, so. Thank you again for your efforts and all the work.
Great, thank you, Junh. Who's next?
San Ar.
Welcome, San.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. First, I would like to ask that the Commissioners, please disclose if you have any affiliation with IMB Law, which is the organization that sued the city in the matter of this housing element. So that if there's any Commissioners that have any direct or indirect affiliations with IMB Law, perhaps you should recuse yourselves from this discussion. I know it's probably coming in the midst of the discussion, but it would be good to recuse yourselves if you have any sort of affiliation to this organization that has created an impact to our ability to enforce environmental inspections and conditions on any sort of development. It is scary to think about a CEQA exemption, a blanket CEQA exemption that allows for sites to be developed without the necessary safety precautions in place, keeping in mind the concerns that some of these toxic sites can produce, for instance. So hopefully, we will hear a proactive recusal from any Commissioners that have direct or indirect affiliations to IMB Law or any of its related organizations. Secondly, I ask that you please approve as-is the proposal from staff. I believe that Luke and Pugh have done a tremendous job here, and they have been very balanced in making sure that we meet the needs of HCD while also keeping in mind the needs of residents and the input of the community. I'm very concerned about the input provided by this Commissioner that was just appointed after a duly-appointed Commissioner was removed. And again, I ask, you know, what are the affiliations, if any, to any IMB orgs or any other developer orgs? Because the Commissioner has a history of constantly pushing for recommendations that are even further beyond what staff recommend. And that is deeply concerning when you're hearing near-unanimous resident input here to err on the side of moderation and to preserve the character of Cupertino as best as you can while meeting the needs within the transit corridors. And so I ask that you please not make any changes on the setbacks. I also am alarmed at the previous speaker who did not care if he was a resident of Cupertino or a developer or what the affinity to the city was, but hopefully, we are not making any kind of change to corner lots beyond what has already been made to allow for R1 do play in place of R1 corner lots. Ideally, we have actually met the AFFH need with our ADU and the ADU bonuses that we have provided as well. So ideally, we would actually look at rescinding the changes made to the corn lots and the lots that are about commercial retail and instead use the ADU provisions that we have approved as meeting the needs of AFFH, which is in fact far more likely to be adopted rather than waiting for corner lots to sell and for do plays to come in. So one may argue that AFF is better met with the ADU provisions. So I would like to say once again.
Thank you, San Ar, your time is up.
Thank you, San. I'll open it up for discussion now. You guys tell me what you think, but I was thinking maybe to make it easier, we discuss, since there's a lot to discuss, we start with 1A and focus on that, then go to 1B, and then, and maybe we can, you know, vote on each one of them as we go, then do 2, and then do 3. Does that work for everyone?
No, go, go.
So, yeah, no, I'm good with that, but where does, you know, any exceptions or modifications go in? For example, you know, R1A, if you want, you know, put it in the same bucket?
It's wherever it, it's so like, 1A is about adopting the new chapters, so wherever that, whatever you want to talk about, you know, just talk about it when we talk about that section, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so where would that be?
If I may, Chair, the exception or the carve-out that you're talking about for R1A would go in 1B.
1B? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
If I may, Chair, if I may add, just to frame the discussion, you can take a motion for each one of those, because that makes a lot of sense, your suggestion.
Yeah, so we can take a motion so that we keep moving. Okay, awesome. So let's start with 1A, which is the adoption of the three new chapters for the R4 zoning and the townhome combining district and the emergency shelters. So, any discussion on those items?
Do we have like two minutes to just read through everything again just to make sure that there's nothing we missed?
Sorry, what, Tejish?
I was just saying, I know you're asking if there's anyone that has any questions or discussion points, I feel like I just need at least a minute to just read through it over again.
Yeah, go for it. Okay, so again, we're talking about 1A, which is the three new chapters, the multifamily residential R4 zoning, the new townhome combining district, and the emergency shelters.
Sorry, you know, which page, can you, can you say which page you're on?
It's Chapters 19.38, Chapter 19.46, and Chapter 19.50. So I actually had a question, where do the definitions fall? Is this in this section or if we wanted to talk about the definitions?
That would be in 1B.
1B? Okay. Okay, so I had a couple of questions about the townhome combining district, that falls in here, right? What about the R2 overlay? Does that fall here or the next chapter?
That would be 1B.
Okay, all right, so I'll start with the townhome then. Oh, and R4 falls in here as well, okay. Could staff provide more detail around, we've had a few people ask questions about why it's necessary to have the 70-foot height and the five-story and have both specified? Can you clarify why that's, that's necessary?
Okay, I'll start, and this also might be a good example to let Charlie at Placeworks weigh in after me, but I think we're really looking at 70 feet to be guiding and then thinking, okay, what would fit within that? And I think a lot of it had to do with the typical building construction of having a podium at the ground floor or something with a higher floor plate that would really only allow you to do, say, a five-story building. So is it possible to do a six-story building? I'm sure it is. If you look at 10 floors times 6, that still only gets you to 60, so if you had 11, 12 feet on average, you could get there. But that was really, I think, 70 feet was more the guiding of the two, but also in going through this process, we found a lot of people like to understand things in terms of stories. So we had both standards, but I don't know if you're there, Charlie, I saw you on Zoom, if you also wanted to just elaborate at the height standard we have for R4?
Sure, I'm basically repeating what you just said, but for example, I'm sitting
Sure, I'm, I'm, I'm basically repeating what you just said, but for example, I'm sitting, um, in our ADU. And you can see kind of the difference in the quality of the experience of being indoors, or especially in a multi-story building where. You know, you don't have the same kind of access to air and light that you might in a single family or townhome, so. The ceiling above me and the high part is actually. Twelve here and then it grades up at a two twelve to fourteen and then this ceiling. The side is what goes into the bathroom and the kitchen and it's more of an eight, eight and a half, and so. You definitely can get six stories in seventy feet and there's no reason to say five stories. Other than that's probably what's most likely going to happen within seventy and it allows people to s- to understand, you know, most people think in stories, not in feet. Um, you don't need the five. Um, you may get some six, but I think in general, you, you find in the, in the industry that. If you try to get six, especially with podium parking into seventy, you're going to end up with some pretty cramped looking and feeling. Um, basically apartment style interiors, but there's, you, you don't have to put five stories, you certainly can take that off and leave it seventy.
Can I add a question to that? Uh, what, what would happen in the case that the developer decides to add underground parking? Does that go into the seventy feet or the five stories that you were suggesting?
No, it would just be above grade. It measured from grade to the top of the structure.
Okay, got it.
And that would, uh, Commissioner, that would be the case where the six could work. It's exactly that, where there is no, you know, where the, your, your finished grade. Starts right at this, the stoop of the front porches or the, you know, the, the habitable area and you don't have anything underneath.
Right, okay, so I'm just thinking realistically, anyone building that tall is going to have to do. Some below grade parking to be able to meet the requirements for, um, whoever's living there. Okay.
And of course, the cost of, the cost of a full floor excavation for parking is significant compared to, you know, a slightly daylighted story plus. And then there's issues of, if you have a slightly daylighted story, you can get natural light into it, use the electricity costs and the, and the conduit and all that stuff too.
Right.
So I guess my thoughts on this one is, you know, as Commissioner Sharf mentioned earlier, it's like we have a lot of. Uh, housing that is not getting built because the economics just don't make sense right now. So if we can make it easier somehow, my, you know, my perception is that most residents care about the height. Not so much about how many stories go into that height, they just don't want something looming over them per- past a certain height. So if, if loosening that, the, the number of requirements and just restricting it just to the height. Um, makes it more likely that, uh, they can make the economics work out and they can build this. Um, I think I would be leaning towards that. I don't know how my fellow Commissioners feel about that.
I, I agree, a streamlined, um, direction seems a lot more fair. I don't, I don't know if that's the right word, um, but I did have one other question, I, I forgot to retell what city it was. But it's in the Bay Area where there were buildings that they were allowing at these kinds of heights. But specifically saying that, um, they couldn't have flat roofs. Um, because I guess there was a concern about buildings putting amenities on rooftops. Um, is that something that's come up or that we've considered or thought about? Just because I can imagine a five-story building that's got a. Full amenity rooftop overlooking single-family homes is. Going to cause even more uproar than the fact that there's just a, a really tall building on that store to a single-family home.
Uh, there's nothing in the proposed zoning that's, you know, going to be describing shape or the roof pitch in the R four zone. Um, presumably you would have some flat roofs and some that are modified at, at that height.
So the, the seventy feet does not include density bonus, right? You could go higher?
Correct, that's the zoning, n- nothing in the zoning code is accounting for density bonus, it's just, these are the standards, density bonus could always deviate from them.
And how much higher can you go with density bonus? It depends on the percentage.
On the percentage of affordability, correct?
Right, a thousand feet. No, I mean, I kind of like.
I mean, if it was a hundred percent affordable, I mean, we can do the math, it's not going to get to a thousand feet. I mean, it'll be.
The height could be anything they want it to be, no matter how many affordable units. In fact, even if they didn't provide, uh, they, they just have to provide the affordable units to get any height limit that they want.
Okay.
I, I'm just wondering if we keep the five stories in there. If they're more likely to want to do density bonus to get more units or are they going to be less likely? Um, what was the logic in including the five stories?
Uh, I think like we had said, we were just assuming what building type would fit within the seventy feet. It seemed more likely that it would be a five-story building with podium parking, which is where the five stories came from. We, we were just trying to think what building is the most logical to occur within a seventy-foot height limit.
Uh, okay, so you were, you were thinking about the podium parking, so.
Correct, and, and also to think about if there was a, a taller first floor, um, if it was a mixed-use building, you would have a taller first floor. To account for that, you would have the, the ground plus four kind of development.
So we didn't encourage mixed use if we keep the five stories in there?
Not necessarily, I mean, it, it, it's what the developer these days pencils out.
I, I'm, if I may, and I don't know if I need to go through the chair, but I think, I think it would encourage more active. Community spaces in the ground floor, because you're going to have a probably a twelve to fourteen foot floor plate for that, so you might get. A gathering area or childcare or, you know, a lot, some of the amenities you might see in some of these buildings, and if you have mixed use, you might actually get. Um, some, you know, minor retail or some other services that people might want in the neighborhood, but. That, that is a good point, that if you, if you keep it at five stories. The likelihood of getting the higher floor plate, ground floor is a reality, but, you know, as the staff said. You, you can always use the density bonus to go higher, I mean, I, I don't want to throw out numbers, but I mean. You're, you're, you're probably not going to see developers on a seventy-foot height limit go fifty feet higher than that.
Right, I know.
It's, it's, at some point, you've got issues with the FAA, right?
Well, I mean, it's, it's the cost of construction too, over eight floors, it gets very expensive.
Right, so, so, so as you know, so then if you took what could be an eight-story building, so let's say a hundred feet. And someone wanted to do six or seven stories in a hundred feet. The likelihood of the, of the higher floor plates for each floor. In general, I think is going to be viewed by the real estate industry as providing a better product, right? The taller this, the taller the ceiling. In your unit, your home, whatever, is, is going to be more attractive and, and produce a higher return on investment, so. I don't think there's any reason you have to say five, you could say six, but as staff has pointed out. All that's fungible through, through the, through the density bonus and. Part, part of the purpose of the zoning, purpose and applicability is to try to let people know the kind of product you think is appropriate for the community.
Right, I, I mean, I appreciate that, but from my perspective, if it, if it pencils out. And for some reason it is attractive to the developer to have a podium, uh, or, or retail, they will do that. They, they will follow the economics, so I don't know that we need to prescribe it for them. Um, I think the more open we leave it, the more likely they are to build. And we kind of need them to build because we've seen how few of them have built so far that we have approved, so. I think we should be looking at being less prescriptive rather than more prescriptive wherever it makes sense without, you know. I mean, we still maintain the height limit, so, so within, within reason. Make, you know, loosening where it makes sense, I think will make it easier to get actual stuff built.
Well, yeah, I, I disagree, I think we should prescribe it because we are losing so much retail as a result of Rena. And it's true, you know, the reality is, the developer really doesn't want to build the ground floor retail. You can see all over Cupertino, um, how unsuccessful the ground floor retail has been. Um, unless we prescribe it, they will never build it and.
And if you prescribe it, they may not, they're not going to build it if it doesn't pencil out economically, so forcing them to do something that doesn't. Pencil out is just going to result in them not building at all.
Well, I mean, it will pencil out, it will not be maybe as profitable as they would wish, but. You know, I, I don't know about, I don't stay up at night worrying about how much profit a developer is going to make. Um, if it pencils out, great, if they're making X number of dollars and it's a little less because of the ground floor retail. Hey, that's the price of building, um, you know, that, you know, that's why we're here to try to. Um, create a livable community where, where it's not all just housing.
You, you were just complaining, you know, half an hour ago about how none of the, the stuff that's been approved is built. And we're just going to continue that cycle and we will just keep approving stuff, but we'll put so many restrictions that it just will not get built.
Well, I mean, you're assuming it's not built because of retail, the Hamptons had no retail and it didn't get built. Um, you know, Valco keeps reducing the retail, it still doesn't get built. Um, yeah, I don't think encouraging retail by having that five-story limit is, um. Is not a good idea, I think it's a good idea, though. So I, I personally would not take it out, but, you know.
Okay.
We'll see how the vote goes.
You have to push the other button, yeah.
So, um, I agree with, you know, Commissioner Sharf, um, if you're not prescriptive, then, you know. It's whatever they want to do and, you know, and we have certain expectations for the city. And I, I do believe, you know, we need to be very pres- prescriptive in terms of, you know, what we want to see built. Otherwise, you know, we'll have no retail in the city.
I guess I, if I could counter that, if we look at what some of the, uh, priority sites that have been added in. It's sites that have been retailed that have been defunct for many, many years now. Um, it's just a reality that we, it's very hard to do retail in Cupertino when the land is worth so much. And housing is so much more profitable, so, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, ground floor retail is great. Um, if we can have it everywhere, that would be fantastic, but if it doesn't work out, I mean, I, I, I. I understand what, uh, Commissioner Lynn's God saying. If we force them to do it and it's not worth the money for them to, to develop it with that in, they're just not going to do it. They're just not going to develop. I think we, we, we don't want to disincentivize people from building by putting in things. Um, kind of because we, we wish something to happen, uh, we're trying to encourage development.
So, I mean, I would counter that, if we look at some of the retail that's converting to housing. It's not because the retail necessarily failed, it's just because the housing is so much more profitable than the retail. I mean, I hate to lose the, the nursery, um, and, you know, there, there's other retail that was not failing. But it's like, wow, we can make a lot more money with housing and have no retail at all. And I think, I think we need to create a balance and I appreciate Placeworks. Uh, putting in that five-story, uh, requirement for seventy feet.
I think there's plenty of retail around the city that is struggling, we all know that. There's a ton of small businesses that are struggling in our city, so for us to keep saying, yeah, let's build more, but we. The way, if you really want to support retail, we need to pass incentives, we need to pass promotional things, we need to promote small business. You know, make it easier to, to get permits passed, I mean, it's like. Let's make it easier to be a small business in this town rather than forcing our developers to build something that may or may not actually. Ever get built because it's, just doesn't make sense financially, but anyway, that's my two cents.
If I were to come to, to try to summarize, I think I agree with all of you. But the, the reality is, until Stevens Creek Boulevard corridor has density. We're never going to see an uptick in retail because we need foot traffic in the city. We need actual, uh, young residents to go shopping. And if those people don't exist, they're not going, there's no reason for anyone to develop any more retail than currently exists. So one thing may lead to the other, but us prescribing it may just stop everybody in their, in their footsteps.
Um, okay, so moving on.
Can we move on?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments on the townhome combining district. Um, so I wanted to get staff's, uh, thoughts on the letter that we got from Summerhill. Um, asking for increased heights and, um, I think extended coverage and a few other things. Um, can you comment on, uh, the requests in that letter?
Yeah, and I'll try to, I'd read it through, um, I think some were fairly straightforward, I know the idea in particular about. Rather than having the units be strictly vertical, but having the living areas be horizontal on the, the, what would be the second and third floors. I don't think anyone has any issue with that at all. I think a lot of the basis of thinking them having not, no unit above is based on, one, the townhomes we've seen developed. And last September, we had a sort of charrette with residential developers and. That was the prototype we were going by, that was really what came up, but. That, that type would not affect the height or anything in any way, so if that gives a developer more flexibility, great. I, I don't think we need to address that.
Sorry, just sorry to interrupt, but, so you're saying it wouldn't affect the height, but they're asking for thirty-seven feet, I think, right?
They are, but I don't think it's related to how the floors would be arranged, I think they're asking for greater height, just to have greater height. Because they're talking, I think, about nine-foot ceilings and the four twelve roof pitch. You'd probably get to over thirty feet anyway, de- depending on, um. Regardless of how you arrange the floors above.
So they could do stacked townhomes within the thirty-foot limit?
I think you could certainly, depending on, if you, you could have a lower ceilings, there, there would be, there would be options to get there, I think. The primary issue for tonight with the thirty feet is that there's a general plan height limit of thirty feet, so keeping the consistency. I know they were looking at thirty-seven. Um, again, there's always the waiver option which comes up on projects like this, but. You know, the overall ideas they had, the FAR, I know we're proposing seventy, they were looking at something in like the one-ten range minimum. Just doing a quick calculation, we didn't have a lot of time on that, one-ten is probably high where you're going to end up with average units. Well over two thousand, probably more like twenty-four hundred square feet. So seventy could be low, it's hard to know, again, I mean. The thing with doing this is we're not coming up with equations where there's one right answer. There's answers that are reasonable and what you think your community supports, so. I think it could go up from seventy, one-ten is probably high unless you're looking at having very large townhomes, which are lucrative to build. Um, but they're kind of getting to be single-family detached scale at that point, they're not so much like a fifteen, sixteen hundred square foot townhome.
So they could still come for a waiver, right?
Oh, of course, I mean, yes, on, on anything five units or more, any project is eligible for density bonus, so, correct. Yeah, overall, I think they're.
They won't want to do density bonus, though.
No, I think overall, I mean, the, the letter from them seemed reasonable where they were describing product types they want to build. They weren't asking for forty or fifty feet, they, they were just describing things they had built. Um, again, the arrangement of the floors, we have no issue with that at all. But I, I think the, the thirty-seven feet at this time just poses an issue because. The general plan limitation of thirty feet is in line with R two and R three zoning standards. Because those properties are often in single-family neighborhoods.
So aren't they trying to do like a two-story townhouse and then is it underneath the one-story or?
No, it's three stories where you'd have like ground floors and then one, one floor is one townhouse, the other one is another townhouse, so you get three floors total. But they kind of stack on top of each other.
Ah, okay.
I, I've actually, I visited a brand new one of these, I, it's, I, I didn't even realize that we were in one that was built this way. Until we went to go see it, it was a prototype somewhere in South San Jose off of like, Curtner, I believe, Road. But, um, I think the point that what Summerhill makes, which was clear once you saw the unit. Is it allows them to build smaller units, um, that are, that fit into the townhome, um, module. That then you can have some variety in the sizes that you're selling. And you can, you can make it, make like a two-bedroom unit that is affordable for somebody to buy. Because I think one of the problems that we have, and it's Summerhill kind of addresses it as well, is. When you've got sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred, almost two thousand square foot townhomes. Those are selling for like two point four billion dollars in Cupertino. That's not a affordable home by any standards. Um, so if you can get something that's smaller built as part of a unit like that. There is potentially some variety in the price points that are getting built. Um, which is, I think, something that we should try to encourage. Um, because yeah, a starting point of one point eight million for a townhouse development is not exactly. Selling a, selling a, a story of affordability in Cupertino.
Any other comments from Commissioners on that letter?
Uh. Just, I, I've been very impressed with Summerhill Homes, um, over in Bishop Ranch in San Ramon. Um, where they're tearing down commercial office building. where they're tearing down commercial office building, Summerhill is building a community with single-family homes and townhomes. And I think converting commercial to residential obviously is we're going to have to start doing more of that if we're going to meet our arena. So I, I don't know if they should do it through waivers, but I don't think what they're asking for is unreasonable.
All right. Any other comments on 1A, the three chapters, the R4 zone, the townhome, the emergency shelter? And if not, we can entertain a motion.
No further comments from me.
Mooney? Nothing? You're good? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion? Deja, she want to make a motion?
Motion on this one. Like, what, do we have a proposed motion?
Uh, this is for 1A. So, uh, no, because we're splitting things up. So you'd have to kind of just say the motion.
Oh, boy. I'm just trying to even find where it would be.
Uh, it's on page four of the agenda. So you can say something like the planning commission recommends to adopt the three new chapters, chapter 19.38, multifamily residential R4, chapter 19.46, townhome combining district, and chapter 19.50, emergency shelter. And then if you want to add anything to that, you know, with the blah, 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 and then we vote on it.
Give me a second. I'm back to page four.
Do you guys want me to make the motion? No, go ahead, Deja. She can do it.
No, no, go ahead, Seema. I'm still, I'm just debating internally. The, the five-story versus 70 feet is not, is, is not that big of a deal to me because I think what we've heard is effectively the developer is going to just determine how to make that work and go for a waiver if they need to do something different than the five stories. I don't want to make that a contentious issue.
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, so I'll make a motion. So I moved that the planning commission adopt the three new chapters, chapter 19.38, multifamily residential R4 zones, chapter 19.46, townhome combining district, uh, chapter 19.50, emergency shelters, with the addition that the townhome combining district also allow for an increased height to 35 feet. And but maintain the lot coverage limit at 55% and eliminate the FAR restriction. And also that the proposed section 19.46.040 be revised to clarify that it's intended to refer only to the requirements and procedures regarding development plans as established in section 1936.040 and 1938.040. And also that the ROB in table 1946.060 is, yeah, I thought that was important. The maximum lot width refers to the width of the lot, which is no more than one townhome as distinct from a lot with multiple townhomes. Oh, and I guess the building development regulations table is mislabeled as, and it should be labeled 19.46.070.
So you're proposing 35 feet?
Yeah.
And getting rid of the FAR?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm a little, sorry, that we didn't discuss that at all.
Oh, sorry. We can discuss it.
Getting rid of floor area ratio altogether seems a bit drastic.
Sorry, I forgot to discuss that with you guys. So I, I was trying to make it consistent with the current where we, we focus on lot coverage. So I was trying to be consistent with that, but I can take that out.
Just to clarify, you and Luke, the current floor area ratio for the, for our townhomes, TH3? What is it currently and as it's written?
As it's written, it's 0.70. So I mean, there is no, there is no townhome district until we establish it now, but the proposed is 0.7. Yeah, and I believe Summerhill said they, a minimum of 1.10 or essentially 110.
So I guess what I was saying is, sorry, so what I, I guess what I was saying is we just go to the lot coverage, which is what we seem to use, and just use that and say 55%, which is what it, you know, to be consistent instead of doing the FAR because I guess we can pick a number on the FAR if we think 0.7 is too low, but 1.1 is too high. I just thought it would be easier to just say, okay, we're just going to maintain the lot coverage limit at 55% and let that govern.
I have a question, and I apologize if we've kind of discussed this already. For uh, density on lots that are planning to be rezoned as townhome, what is the, what is the, the required minimum density? Is it 30, 30 units per acre?
It's generally 20, but yeah, density is based in the general plan. So it's typically a range of 20 to 35 for townhomes.
So if, and I, again, I apologize for asking questions about trying to calculate off, on, on this, on the, off the cuff. What would 20 units on per acre roughly be townhome square footage? Assuming three stories with a two-car garage on the, on the ground floor.
So I, I can try to answer that. If you had on average a 1,600 square foot townhome, which is also still fairly big, add to that 400 square feet for a two-car garage, you'd get to about a 2,000 square foot FAR per townhome. And if, if you were to apply that to an acre, it comes out to about 90% FAR.
That's almost 100% with no landscaping and no setbacks.
Well, but these, this is on three levels, right? So you see, you would still have some setbacks and other stuff.
Yeah, but no, no, meaning you're, you're essentially covering, oh, no, 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 right. Your floor area ratio is essentially 100%. Lot coverage is probably closer to 50.
Correct.
Or maybe even, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. So, and that's 1,600 plus a two-car garage.
Correct. And that's an average size, so some could be bigger, some could be smaller.
Yeah.
Right. But the city already uses 55% lot coverage, and that's why I was going back to that. I was going back to that, trying to, instead of trying to figure out what would be the right FAR. That would be not too, but not too high.
What, what would be the easiest way to, to, to write this into, into what we're doing here? Meaning, I, like, floor area ratio seems more logical than lot coverage to me, unless we're trying to achieve some level of landscaping and, and, and open space. Is, I, I, what, what's the intention here?
I think with multi-story buildings, you generally use FAR more than just coverage. And I think for the reason you're saying, the coverage kind of caps how much of the area of the site you can have. And floor area ratio then is really controlling the, the overall volume of the structure. You know, so I, it is more typical when you get into higher density zones or even office development that you have an FAR standard.
Right. So, I mean, if we were to, if we were aiming to achieve something closer to 30 townhomes per acre, I'm, I'm just using that as a number. You would need a FAR of at least one, right, to be able to make that happen without ending up with like thousand square foot townhouses.
So you wouldn't be building townhomes at 30 dwelling units. The townhomes are generally about 20 dwelling units to the acre. So at 20 dwelling units to the acre, an average having a 2,000 square foot unit, including garage, you come out to a buildable area or area of about 40,000 square feet. And when you divide that by the square footage of an acre, it comes out to about 90%.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm saying, basically, if you get to an FAR of one, yeah, 100%, yeah, versus 0.9, almost the same. But you're also assuming all same four-bedroom, four-bath, 2,000 square foot townhouses, whereas they could be putting in 1,200 square foot.
Right, some variation.
Back as well, doing all sorts of things.
Right. So it, that average of about 1,600 to 2,000 allows for that variation.
Yeah. So if I were to recommend Commissioner Lindstrum, I would put a floor area ratio of 100% of, or one and, and not worry about lot coverage.
Are you proposing an amendment to my?
I am. I am proposing that we adjust your motion to include a floor area ratio of one or 100%.
Okay. All right. Any other? I, I accept your amendment.
At this point, you're looking for a second.
Yeah, I was just checking to see if anybody, anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, wait, sorry, Mooney has questions.
No, it's not clear to me what's the change.
Yeah.
So we took out the land area, I had proposed the lot area coverage of 55% and we're taking that out and saying increase height to 35 feet and do an FAR of one.
From, what is the FAR now?
0.7?
Point.
Right now, it's proposed, yeah, at 70%. So it would be going up from 70 to 100.
Taking it to 100%.
Yeah.
That's the proposal on the table, yeah.
Right.
And just to be sure, that proposal also includes removing any lot coverage?
Uh, I thought I said that, but yeah, remove the lot coverage, yeah.
All right. Well, yeah, I can't support that, but you have a second, so we could vote if you're ready.
Do you guys want to talk about it?
I like it the way it is at 0.7 and with the, you know, current lot coverage, but.
That's where my head is too.
Yeah, I mean, I respect what the planning department has done and what Placeworks has done. And, uh, yeah, that's not something I would change.
All right, let's vote on your motion.
You can vote on it.
All right, let's vote on it.
Commissioner Mari Potla.
No, you have to voice vote.
No.
Commissioner Ministry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scharf?
No.
Vice Chair Lindstrum?
Yes.
Uh, motion fails with Lindstrum and Scharf, or Lindstrum and Ministry voting yes.
Does anyone have any other motions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion just to accept it as, as written with the current FAR and lot coverage, excuse me.
I second that.
So not increase the height limit to 35 for townhomes?
Right.
Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Mari Potla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ministry?
No.
Commissioner Scharf?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lindstrum?
No.
Motion fails with Mari Potla and Scharf voting yes.
Okay, so can we, do we move on to the next item?
All right, moving on to 1B. Amendments to chapter 1908, chapter 1912, chapter 1916, 1920. Okay, I'm not going to read all that. Yeah, long number of chapters. Anybody have any comments?
Wait, which is the one with the corner lot duplex? Is this the one?
It's this one, I think, yeah.
It should be this one.
Yeah, it's this one.
It was mentioned in there that the corner lot duplexes have to be rentals.
Did it? I don't remember. Can, can we go to that?
Why is that?
In the housing element itself, it was, I believe, encouraging rental properties. I don't think we can require it, but it was a way of in talking to HCD, the goal was to get more affordable, smaller units by design, but also to get rental units into areas that are heavily owner occupied since Cupertino has such a high proportion of single-family detached housing. But we can't require.
Well, I mean, I would think a duplex would be more affordable than a single-family home. But you're just saying if it was a rental, it would be even more affordable? And the person's getting no equity and?
They're giving people options if they can't afford to buy, that they therefore would have a rental option in a place they otherwise might not.
Yeah, I could have sworn in there I saw something that it said rental, rentals on corner lots.
Right, it's in the housing element. You're right.
I did find it. Oh, hold on. It's on page, I think this is what you're referencing, Stephen. It's on page 43 of 95.
Let me scroll down there. Right, okay. Right, rental duplex developments. I mean, you know, personally, I'm okay with duplexes in a single-family neighborhood. I've seen the ones over near Lawson Middle School. You wouldn't even really know that it's a duplex unless you looked really carefully. But I don't see why we have to have the word rental in there. If, if a builder wants to do for sale duplexes, I think that's great. I think we want more for sale housing. So, I mean, I would propose taking out the word rental as the only modification there.
Yeah, I think that was just in, because that was the language used in the housing element itself, but you're correct. We, we can't require that it would be a rental.
So we can take that word out?
Yeah, we absolutely can. I think the goal is to get duplex was the intent.
Okay, great. Any other comments, anyone?
No, I mean, I will mention, I had some questions about the parking restrictions, but I think I resolved those. I did have one question about, I guess, effectively, if somebody were to build a duplex on a corner lot that currently exists, we're, we're expecting essentially two, two-car garages with two driveways for four parking spaces total. Would that mean we would have to create a second driveway off the sidewalk? Um, so that there's a driveway on one side of the corner and, and a second one on the other side? Because I'm trying to envision how you would have essentially four-car garage on one side otherwise.
No, we're not expecting, yeah, no, so the, the duplex requirements are one and a half open and one and a half enclosed per unit. However, if you have existing garages and all you're doing is adding another duplex unit, I don't know that we would make somebody actually provide additional garage space. However, uh, we have duplexes around in this community where you only have one driveway. Uh, they don't necessarily have to have two driveways. But they accommodate the full parking that's required.
Yeah. I guess I'm just, again, just trying to think of how this would work where we don't end up with a kind of a scary looking monster on the corner, which is just one huge garage. My concern is that anyone trying to follow the rules to a T is, is going to end up with a, with a project that looks pretty ugly.
I mean, they, they could do a tandem garage if they wanted to, like in San Francisco. But yeah, I think it might be likely that they do one driveway on one street and another driveway on the other street. That's certainly a possibility. But yeah, right, some of the duplexes you see now, the two garages are right next to each other and they share a driveway.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but that works because they're not on a corner. This is, that's where this is getting complicated.
No, I mean, I've, I've seen one on a corner over near Lawson that is that same way with driveway, two driveways and two garages. Well, one driveway and two garages right next to each other. So, yeah, I don't know if we want to go into that much detail.
Yeah, it was just a concern.
I had a question about the duplex definition. You, there is the, this language that was added that said, i.e. no more than 200 square foot difference between the two primary dwelling units. Does that make it into a requirement that there should be no more than 200 square foot difference between the two primary residences or that's just kind of an example?
No, that is, would be a requirement. The definition currently says two comparable units. And because state law is moving towards objective standards in terms of, you know, what, what, what does that mean when somebody asks us, well, what does comparable mean? And because state law is moving towards objective standards in terms of, you know, what, what, what does that mean when somebody asks us, well, what does comparable mean? Comparable, you know, in their mind could be 4,000 square feet and 200 square feet could be comparable. So without having some sort of a standard, it would be really hard for us to implement those regulations about what truly a duplex means. And so this is some way of addressing that concern, it's actually advice from our attorneys as well to kind of, you know, have objective standards where you can. If, if that 200 square feet seems to be an impediment, you know, certainly that 200 could be 300, you know. However, when this standard was come up with, the thinking was 200 square feet accommodates a bathroom and a bedroom essentially, which is typically what you see in duplex developments is one two-bedroom unit, one three-bedroom unit, and so that was kind of where this comes from.
Okay, got it, so it's essentially basically one additional bedroom and bathroom. Okay, thank you.
The, the section where we remove the rental, is that the way we would address another R1A as well?
Yes.
Okay. I suggest, you know, addressing that, given that that's what the community and the residents want.
Yeah, in terms of the carve-out for the R1A units, I think that makes total sense. If, you know, if that is the character of that community, to keep that intact, it doesn't, you know, given the lot sizes, they're 10-foot, 10,000 square feet lots, that's, I don't think it will affect the ability of anybody who redevelops those lots to, to build whatever they want and still maintain that 30-foot setback. So, so yeah, I'm leaning towards agreeing with the community on that one as well.
Okay, so the two changes would be removing the word rental and changing chapter 19.28.040 to say units located on parcel zone R1A shall meet the required front setbacks for R1A zoning district.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have one more, the, for the, oh no, that was townhome, sorry, different one. So, so the parking ratio right now, it, for the R2 overlay on R1-zoned units, can I just get some clarifications on staff? What is the, the, for the R2 overlay, is it three parkings per dwelling unit?
Yes, we have one and a half open and one and a half enclosed per unit. That is the current requirement.
Three per duplex, right, not three per unit of the duplex.
It's three per unit of the duplex, that's what it currently is.
So it's six total?
Six total, yeah.
Can we, so, is it within our scope to change that to be, you know, one per dwelling unit, consistent with the townhome?
If you were carving it out for this particular provision, yes, sure.
Okay.
Well, Seema, what were you considering to propose?
One per dwelling unit to be consistent with what we, what they're, what the city is proposing for the townhome combining district.
Got it, okay, that would actually alleviate some of my concern about ugly corner units.
Yeah, I mean, six for a duplex seems excessive. Don't even require that for a single-family home.
Wait, I, I thought for a single-family home, right now it's two in a garage and two.
Outside.
Outside, so, so for a duplex, it's proposed to reduce it to 1.5?
For the corner, for the corner lots and the, the properties about in commercial properties, it would be a total of four. I'm assuming one per unit and one on the driveway, so total of four still.
Right, but two per unit.
Two per unit, yes.
Whereas now, a single-family home is really four.
Correct.
And, and the proposal is to reduce it even further?
No, wait, I'm confused because it says duplex R2, three per dwelling unit, one and a half enclosed, one and a half open, that's not two.
No, so, so let me frame this again, so current existing R1 standards are four total.
Yeah.
Existing standards for R2 currently are six total. And I believe the proposal on the table is four total for the corner and commercial duplexes.
So it would be one per dwelling unit, so you're counting two for the ADUs?
For the driveway, so one per unit and one on the driveway, so for a total of four.
Yep, 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 so four, yeah.
But you wanted to reduce it to three?
No, 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 it's, it is, right now, it's, it's three per dwelling unit, so for a duplex, it would be six. And what I'm proposing is to make it one covered, one uncovered per dwelling unit, so that would be consistent with the, the townhome standard.
Yeah, the, I mean, the issue with that is for new construction of these duplexes, they would probably each have an ADU, that would be legal, right?
Yes, if you build a town, if you build a duplex, you can have two ADUs with it.
Right, so we, you know, we can't require parking for ADUs, but we can require sufficient parking for the duplex, which would by kind of default give enough parking for the ADU as well. So yeah, I would stick with the three per ADU for, three per half duplex for a total of six.
I just wanted to point out that if you are a single-family home, you could build three ADUs on it without any parking requirements. I just wanted to state that as a fact.
Yeah, even the garage that you require on a brand-new, single-family home effectively can be turned into an ADU.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And all you end up with is two uncovered parking.
That's right, but, you know, do we want to make things as bad as possible or try to do, make it as good as possible?
Well, do we want giant garages on every corner lot also? I mean, it's six parking spaces is a lot.
It's a lot, it's basically you're just taking a corner lot and making it into concrete.
Yeah, I mean, it is, six parking spaces is a lot, but remember, it's essentially four units now.
We're not counting the ADUs, right? I mean, then, in that case, we should be, for single-family homes, we should be changing the zoning to like 12 parking spaces, I mean.
Well, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we can do that though.
No, I know, but it, it, you're, the logic that you're using essentially means that what, what Seema is saying, you should, we have to essentially assume the worst-case scenario.
Well, so for the single-family homes, even though we say, you know, ADUs, three ADUs, JDU's, they can build, we know practically nobody's going to do that, right, so you have a single-family home, one ADU, one JDU, right? But this one, the corner lot, will happen, right, so, and, and, and we cannot shoot ourselves in the foot.
Right, there'll be new construction.
I'm just saying, even in my own neighborhood, I think there's three, three homes that have taken their garages and turned them into ADUs. It's happening everywhere in Cupertino. Garages are disappearing and, and people just have the surface driveway parking lot, that's it.
We can't use the logic that let's provide parking to the maximum of what could possibly happen on a lot, because then, you know, we're, we're going to turn the city into a big parking lot.
Yeah, exactly.
We, we have to look at what is kind of the reasonable expectation and I doubt, I mean, unless it's a really big corner lot, I doubt very much that they're going to build, you know, two duplexes plus two ADUs, they're not going to have space for that. For most lots, they're like 7,000 square feet, you're going to put four dwelling units on 7,000 square feet? That seems really unlikely.
I don't, I don't think it's unlikely, I mean, an investor, this is going to be an investor coming in and buying up corner lots and doing as much as they possibly can, two hall, two, a duplex and an ADU for each, and if we don't have parking, well, you can see in San Francisco and other places with all these ADUs, the streets turn into parking lots. And then you can't put in protected bike lanes because the residents say they'll revolt if you take away their street parking. I mean, I really don't like the idea of turning public streets into parking lots because we're not requiring developers to provide adequate parking, so that's my feel.
I would, I go the complete opposite direction. I think having empty streets in residential neighborhoods is a complete waste of space. If people can park on the street, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be using that space for, for that purpose. Land is very valuable, for, for us to be creating, basically developing for the sake of parking a car is just, is suburban mentality that's, that's never going to change and it's never going to make Cupertino improve.
I, I thought, no, the, I, I remember Luke saying, you know, yeah, we are a suburban city and we would like to maintain suburban character, right? So, so of course, you know, people are going to have cars, right, so we're not expecting, you know, residents without cars.
That, that, nobody's saying that, we're, we're saying we don't need to put six parking spaces on a lot so that we can leave all of our streets empty.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we're going to be turning all of our corner lots into, like primarily a big fat garage with some housing behind the big fat garage. I mean, if that's your vision for the city, great, but it really takes away from the curb appeal significantly. If I'm going to be looking at garages as I'm walking down, up and down the street, I would rather be able to see a nice house and have the garage be proportional or the parking space be proportional so we don't have as much hardscape because they have to accommodate so much external parking space as well as a big fat garage. It's going to create ugly buildings, ugly homes and a lot of hardscape. Yeah, I, I think it's going to do the opposite of what you're intending and it's, it's going to take away from our quality of life.
So, so I'm thinking, my in-law's house in San Francisco, the Excelsior District, every house, there's no space between houses. Every house, nearly everyone has an ADU, or in-law units, they call them. They've used half the garage for, for the in-law, so they end up with one parking space. People circle the neighborhood looking for parking, I've visited, I can circle for 30 minutes looking for a parking space and they've essentially turned the public street into a, into a parking lot. You could never put a bike lane in, the residents would rebel. People put garbage cans in the street to save parking spaces, they put out cones, it's all illegal, but the police will never do anything about it. It's just, I, I just have, and, and I'm thinking the bike lanes on McClellan, how, and, you know, Mooney lives on McClellan, how the residents, some of them were so upset about losing their street parking. But they don't own the street, the street is owned by the city. Why are we adopting policies that turn our public streets into private parking lots? I just, I just don't get it.
But Stephen, we're not talking about becoming, so San Francisco, they're building homes with zero parking, no parking minimums. We're not talking about that, we're talking about going down from six to four. There's still plenty of space for parking, so it's not like we're saying, let's, let's eliminate parking entirely. That is what San Francisco is doing, they're building a lot of homes with zero parking requirements. That's not at all what we're saying, we're just saying, don't make the entire property a fat garage in front of a fat driveway. Six is a lot, it's, for a duplex to ask for six parking spaces seems unreasonable when for a single-family home, we're asking for four plus the street, right? So they, they can actually park four plus on the street, so they have space for six right in front of their home. That's, you know.
I don't want to count, you know, street parking at all, as Stephen said, you know, it doesn't belong to the residents, right? So, we, we, city takes away by putting bi, bike lanes and whatnot, I'm one of the guys, you know, affected by it, right? I didn't, I supported the bike lane on my street, but, you know, I know it, I don't want it, so city is going to do whatever they want, they'll do it. So, using the excuse of, you know, they can park on the street is not the right thing to do.
Okay, that still leaves four parking spaces that are not on the street.
Yeah.
It's the same as for single-family residences.
Right, but, but it's not, because the single-family resident is, residence is a single-family residence, a duplex is two residences.
But they're smaller.
Well, they may not be actually smaller, but.
They have to be small despite the fact that there's no way they can fit the same size of a house on that corner. Effectively, the house is going to be smaller, it's not going to be the same amount of residents.
It just seems to me like asking somebody who owns a duplex lot to put in six parking spaces, we're, we're being not resident-friendly when we do that.
Well, we're, we're trying to, essentially doing what cities used to do in the past of putting in rules to, to prevent anyone from actually using these, these new provisions.
I think we are trying to avoid, you know, creating conflicts, right? We want to make sure that, you know, we serve our residents sufficiently, we're not trying to, you know, you know, convert Cupertino into San Francisco, right, so, and, and we want to make sure that, you know, residents have a, you know, good quality of life. That means, you know, having enough parking to, without having to, you know, drive around looking for parking.
Yeah, but I saw, I, I actually have friends who live in Cupertino who live in a duplex and they don't like the six parking minimum requirement because it ties their hands in terms of how much they can have livable area of, in their home, because they have to build so much garage and parking. So it limits their ability to have a bigger home, so if, you know, I, I, I'm in a duplex and I have a two-bedroom and I can't expand to a three-bedroom because I have, I'm required to have, you know, more space for a garage, that is not resident-friendly.
I guess, and I, I, what I'm, I think where we started with all of this was that we were trying to make this consistent with what's being proposed for townhomes, which is one dwelling unit, one per dwelling unit. So if you look at what we're suggesting on a corner lot of six parking versus one, this is, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's kind of crazy the difference, so it's actually three versus one, not six versus one, but it's still, it seems a bit unfair.
You know, to facilitate further discussion, it may be a good time for someone to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, but I'll just say one last thing, there's a house near my house, that was a smaller house, and Stephen, you know who I'm talking about. They converted their garage into a bedroom because they, they were running out of room. And that is pretty common in the city, that people need more space to, to, because their families are growing or, or, you know, they bought a smaller house and they would like to add a bedroom. And if we have these, these high garage requirements, we're preventing people from doing that.
Right, and effectively, what you end up doing is having people who build the garage to meet the requirements and then essentially fake an ADU by building an ADU with the kitchen that then gets removed as soon as they, it gets approved.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
I'm going back up to where we are. Oh boy, how are we going to do 1B? Do we have to read the whole thing? I'd like to make an emotion, make a motion that the final commission recommends the city council drops, adopt draft resolutions allowing for consistency with the six cycle of the housing element. I might add edits for clarity as follows in 1B, amendments to chapter 19.08 definitions, chapter 19.12 administration, chapter 19.16 designations and establishment of districts, 19.20, 19.28, 19.36, 19.76, 19.80, 19.100, 19.124, 19.156, 19.168, and 19, and 17.04 with the adjustment for the parking requirements for duplex developments such that duplexes are required to have four parking spaces, sorry, two per dwelling units or a total of four per duplex.
If I may suggest one edit, one open and one enclosed, per unit.
One covered and one.
Yes, yes.
And also the, oh, can I make an amendment? Can I suggest? Can I suggest an amendment to add the carve out for the R1A units, uh, that units located on parcels, zoned R1A?
And, and also rental, remove of the.
Oh, and, and remove the word rental from the description of, uh, the project description for duplexes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I, I was gonna suggest that we don't do the parking because that is not gonna pass, but just do the other ones. But yeah, we can just vote on this, uh, as it was, uh, presented.
Wait, I haven't seconded it yet. I'll second the motion.
All right.
Now we can vote.
Commissioner Mari Potla?
No, because par- parking requirement.
Commissioner Mistri?
Yes.
Commissioner Scharf?
No.
Vice Chair Linskog?
Yes.
Motion fails with, uh, Mistri and, um, Linskog voting yes.
Does anybody have another motion?
The same motion is suggested, but not changing, but keeping the recommendation by the planning department, uh, in terms of parking. Does anybody want to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's vote on the motion.
Commissioner Mari Potla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mistri?
No.
Commissioner Scharf?
Yes.
Vice Chair Linskog?
No.
Motion fails with Mari Potla and Scharf voting yes.
Okay, let's, uh, move on to, uh, number two. Uh, amendments to the heart of the city's specific plan, amendments to the below market mitigation manual and the z- oh, no, sorry, that's it. Anybody have any comments on this, um, this item?
Is this where the BMR, uh, number of units goes from seven to?
Five, yes.
To five. Okay. But I thought now it was 10. No?
It's seven currently.
Okay. That's being required by state law to change that, or is?
It's for compliance with the housing element. It's one of the policies in there.
Okay.
Any comments, anyone?
No.
So what is the lower parking requirement for R3? Chapter 19.124. What was it before?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, sir?
Oh, sorry, in chap- page 17 where it says, where it's chapter 19.12 far, for, to lower the required parking requirement in the R3 zoning district. What was it before and after?
Uh, the, the, the portion that you're talk, discussing right now doesn't include that chapter, but I'm happy.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I'm looking at, right.
It, it, this, the, this portion, section two is related to the heart of the city's specific plan and the BMR manual.
Because I, okay, um.
Do you want to go back to that?
Uh, no, it's fine. No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Mooney, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
Let me go back to the agenda.
Okay, I'll make the motion. The planning commission recommends approval of the specific plan amendments and amendments to the below market rate housing mitigation manual to the city. This is the right one, right? Okay. Uh, mitigation manual to the city of Cupertino municipal code with the findings reflected in the draft resolution attached hereby as exhibits SPA dash one and CP dash one. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Mari Potla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mistri?
Yes.
Commissioner Scharf?
Yes.
Vice Chair Linskog?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, let's move on to number three. Almost there. Zoning map amendments, attachment C to reflect changes to the priority housing sites and other minor changes for internal consistency. Any comments on that from any of the commissioners?
It's just the zoning map, right? Really? That's the part of what's the change?
Correct, it is just to make sure that the zoning map reflects the zoning designations that were reflected in the housing element.
Okay. And then, oh, I'm assuming, oh, that is a dumb question, but this took into consideration the, the church that's now not part of the priority housing sites?
Uh, correct, yeah. This is, that's not being affected by this.
Okay, got it. Okay. Can I make a motion?
Does anyone have any comments?
Mm-hmm.
Mooney?
Move along.
Stephen?
Yeah, no, no comments, yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion. The planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning to the city of Cupertino municipal code with the findings reflected in the draft ordinance attached hereto as exhibit Z. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Mari Potla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mistri?
Yes.
Commissioner Scharf?
Yes.
Vice Chair Linskog?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Um, moving on, any old business?
No old business, Chair.
Great. Any new business?
No new business, Chair.
Um, any staff or commission reports?
No, none at this time.
Oh, yeah, I have commission reports. Um.
Go ahead.
So on June 2nd, I attended a Cali Zoom meeting where Assembly Member Alex Lee was the guest. Uh, the main discussion item, as usual, is affordable housing. And, uh, Assembly Member Lee talked about his desire to build all income level social housing along the lines of Vienna, Austria and Singapore. And then on June 9th, I attended a Zoom meeting where Sen- State Senator Dave Cortese was the guest. And again, the main discussion was housing, how to fund affordable housing, uh, and the construction of which has plunged since the end of redevelopment agencies. And in view of Governor Newsom's cutback of affordable housing funding. And it was good to see that both legislatures, legislators acknowledged the issue with the RENA numbers, both for market rate housing and for affordable housing, and were aware of the state auditor, uh, determining that the statewide RENA was not based on accurate statistics or taking into consideration the declining state population. So we really appreciate it when these state legislators, um, meet with, uh, electeds and, uh, appointed, uh, city officials. And, uh, next week, we will have another state senator to meet with. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Scharf. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Scharf. You used to be a council member. I'm used to calling you that. Um, any other commission reports?
Nope.
Okay, any future agenda items?
Can I propose that we, as a commission, review parking standards for, um, all types of zoning at a future meeting?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm good with that.
What would that require?
I think we would have. I think we'd have to.
For the planning department?
Yes, we'd probably have to agendize that, but from our perspective, uh, you know, we would have to look to see what that would take for our staff, you know, budget and all of that. So we'll have to figure that out.
Okay.
I, I believe Director Fu might want to say something.
Just a clarification that we're, we're talking about similar to like a study session of looking at what the existing parking requirements are and then potentially providing direction for further, further action or studies, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll, we'll take a look at our, uh, our, our, our resources and report back to see when we can make that happen and what that will look like.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you.
Any other future agenda items? Okay, then I think, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.